Calling to order the Department of Public Schools District 76 Board of Education meeting. Go help things.
Here.
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 Ella.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Lada.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise and take part in the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is one nation, under God, and to the soul of liberty and justice for all. Okay, we now open the floor for public comments on Agenda AIDAS. That includes, if anyone has a public comment or question on our return to school roadmap that would be presented this evening, if you have a question or comment on that, please go ahead and type that into the chat box now and we will read that out loud. If as you're going through the presentation you have questions or comments, please feel free to put them in the chat box, but we will follow up during the presentation next week on July 28th and you will get responses to those comments or questions.
We have one question about ordered supplies opted for online learning, how will we get our supplies? Those are my questions.
From the video. You know, what was the question again?
If we ordered supplies and opted for online learning, how will we get our supplies?
Oh, we'll make arrangements for that. We'll identify who you are and make sure that there's a safety sticker pickup for you. Do you have any other questions or comments?
We have a clearly long one from Dr. Perron. It's not a question or a statement, so.
Can you read that to us?
Sure.
Thank you.
The union's position is that in addition to distance learning and in-person learning, blended learning options should be included and be planned for. While some of the teachers feel comfortable and safe going back to in-person learning, there are many teachers with underlying health issues and for whom getting back in-person is high risk. Others will be out because of childcare issues. Even if you have a little, I'm sorry, even if you have a little over 50% of students opting for distance learning, oh, I'm sorry, even if you have 50% of teachers who are needing to teach remotely at state hall, the remainder of those in-person students will be crowded into classrooms. It will be difficult to do required social distancing and while it will put students and teachers at higher risks of contacting COVID-19. Please note that the union absolutely wants all of the students in the District 76 to receive the highest quality education possible and that we all look forward to the time when attending school in person is safe for everyone. The case is rising in Lake County with new research. It's cut off, so.
It looks like she continued.
New research showing that students aged 10 through 19 spread the disease as rates similar to adults. We are depending on the district to plan for safety of students and staff. Another question, has a decision been made on the type of running the kindergarten lab this fall?
I think that question will be answered in the presentation.
There is, I think a lot of times too, people are asking for us to speak a little louder as it's sort of hard to hear and I'm only assuming it's whether it's the mask or I'm also behind the microphone, so.
Okay.
To be honest, I think we should probably start the presentation with these questions to be answered during this time and we can answer that some even more loud.
Honestly, it seems like a public comment and it is the open meeting, the government, the open meeting that you do have to read on.
All right. I'll try to be as loud as possible.
Maybe some to our difficulty hearing. I don't.
Okay. At the last part, okay, this is difficult to hear right now, but. Families First Act employees does not cover parents who have kids back in school or hybrid as the option won't be able to do that unless the entire school is remote. Have you asked the recent survey, or I'm sorry, have you asked the recent surveyor staff or parents with the options that will be presented? Will you survey us, will you survey us parents? Another one, staff was given a survey that would be referenced in the presentation quite a while ago. I feel that if the survey was given again, many of us would answer differently based on the rising cases. Will staff be given an opportunity to retake the survey? If a student frequently takes off a mask and puts my child at risk, will we know so we can pull our child out? I apologize, I apologize for any sort of echo. We're in a gymnasium, so. There were a few comments here just based on echo. I'm also behind the microphone and had said pointed at you and expected present. Understanding that the district has rightfully had a priority focus on learning during the pandemic, I am curious about the status of the crosswalk request from Eagle Drive across Diamond Lake Road. And then, understanding that the district has rightfully had a priority focus on learning during the pandemic, I am curious about says, same exact, sorry, apologize, same exact question. And then last one is, how will students be held, sorry, how students, how will students be held accountable if they are online? I believe I mentioned them all on this slide.
Okay, thank you. Again, if there are questions during the presentation, you can add them to the chat, but there is a parent meeting next week on the 28th at 6:00 in Spanish and at 7:00 in English where the questions will be responded to during the presentation. So if we have no other further public comments or questions on Agenda AIDAS, we'll move on to the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Hanson and Mrs. Hale. Before we get started, I just want to reiterate and emphasize what Mrs. Hale said. That this presentation will be available in English and in Spanish on our website tomorrow. So if there's something that you missed or you didn't hear, it will be available as well as if you want to tell friends and neighbors that it will be available. An email will go out and a text message as well as a voicemail will go out through school messenger informing our faculty and staff. We will compile all the questions and comments that are in tonight's board meeting, whether they were during this, before the meeting or, excuse me, before the presentation or after at the end of the meeting. And that the district leadership team will review them all and respond with thoughtful and accurate information. We will put all that information on our website, on our question and answer. We'll have a frequently asked question sheet. And then, as Mrs. Hale said, the next Tuesday, July 28th, there will be a parent opportunity for Q and A. After you've had the time to review the presentation, the actual document of the road map for return to school as well as then make the decision on the declaration of intent for school return and personal learning in particular for remote learning. So the title change presentation is a roadmap for return to school. We'll walk through all of it, but please know that this is the first time that the board is seeing it in public and give them an opportunity later to ask questions, make comments. If they would like us to add or change names or update dates, we can never to take action at the August 4th board meeting. So it could be board action as well as put into place for implementation district-wide. So this roadmap is based on the Restore Illinois Plan. Phase one started in March 17th and we transitioned to phase two and phase three from March, April through May. And then we started phase four, which is revitalization for Illinois. We started that on June 26th. And how that specifically relates to us as our school district is gathering 50 or fewer people are allowed and that childcare in schools can reopen under specific guidelines from the Illinois Department of Public Health. Help. And then also face covering and social distancing are the norm. Tonight's presentation is based on the information that we received up until today, which is July 21st. So information, as we all know, is rapidly changing. It's coming from our states, coming from the governor's office, from the federal government. And the district continues to monitor, update and adapt procedures as needed. So things could change tomorrow and then we will of course get that information out. But right now, this is based on the most current information that we got. And that's available through the Illinois State Board of Education, which we will refer to going forward. ISB, the Illinois Department of Public Health, which we will refer as IDPH, and the Center for Disease Control, which is the CDC. We continue to work with and consult with our schools, school districts attorney's office on any legal guidelines or advice that we need to do as well as going with our collective bargaining agreement as well as legal ramifications from the state. Work with the Lake County Department of Health, the Lake County Regional Office of Education and all of our feeder school districts to help us respond to questions and address situations as needed. Some of the questions that came up were the time that it takes maybe to clean things or get students into cowl or to train staff. And the answer is yes, that additional time and resources are and will be needed and they will be allocated by the district in the new safety guidelines required by ISB, IDPH and CDC. And then we will continue to update the form stakeholders if and when plans are required or changed because of the new requirements. So as we entered into phase four late in June, ISB recommended three scenarios for schools to reopen in the fall. The first one is distance learning. It was very similar to what all school districts did in the spring. And with us, we did a lot of surveys to ask parents and staff members about what distance learning, how it might in the spring. So we will put in new parameters if we go forward with distance learning as far as the amount of time that on instruction, rigor of instruction, as well as the connection for students. And also base that feedback on the planning forward task force. Scenario two is blended learning, so it's a combination of distance learning as well as onsite learning. And that comes with kind of a varied schedule. It could be partial days or it could be A-B day schedules. That means, you know, some kids come to school on the A day, some students come to school on B days and then they alternate. And there's other creative ways that people or school districts are responding to a blended learning model. And then scenario three is the in-person learning, which is basically going back to school full-time with the parameters that have been set by ISB, IDPH and CDC. So what District 76 has done as far as making our priorities for this decision-making is making sure the extended safety and health and welfare of our students and staff are priority number one. Two is provide them with rigorous and relevant teaching learning experiences for all students regardless of the option of the model that we use. Priority three, making sure that we provide social, emotional learning support, connections and resources for all of our students and their families. And then priority four, continue to communicate clearly and transparently throughout the process. We put together a planning task force in the early part of the year where we had different stakeholders that were represented as far as our discussion and our decision-making. Members of the Board of Education that attended our meeting, all of our administrative team, teaching staff, which consists of teachers from each of our three buildings as well as health and wellness staff, our district psychologists, our community liaison, parents again from pre-K through eight representing all three buildings. We've had three meetings thus far and we have two more meetings planned. And we're sharing our plans, our timelines, our questions or answers and getting feedback from all of them. So much of this information too is based on their feedback. Additional stakeholder information input, we've had surveys from March through July. We've had four parent surveys, two staff surveys, one student surveys talking about distance learning. How do we make it more rigorous, relevant, robust? Do we have to continue that way in the fall? What are options and safety concerns that not only staff have, but family have? And what are specific personal needs and situations we can assign as far as transportation and childcare? We've also created a planning for task force website. We put all of our planning task force on meeting updates as well as any updates from states, from the state in regards to returning to school or any safety, health and wellness guidelines. So we gave out a staff survey about three weeks ago about how comfortable are you returning to onsite school in the fall? And we had about 60%, 62% of staff saying that they were comfortable, which 37% saying they not comfortable returning to school in the fall. The second question was how comfortable are you returning with distance learning in the fall? We had about 77%, almost 78% saying they think we're comfortable with distance learning and about 22% saying they were not. And some of the comments, if I can respond, about the staff that were not comfortable, felt like they weren't able to make the connections with the kids, weren't able to respond to some of their needs. And maybe we didn't orient the technology resources around the online platforms. And then how comfortable are you with the blended learning model? We talked about alternate days or alternate schedules. We had about 76% saying they were comfortable with that and about 24% saying they were not comfortable with that. So our family survey again that was sent about three weeks ago, how comfortable are you with the family to return to in-person school in the fall? And we had about 76, about almost 77% of our families said that they were comfortable with returning to in-person school in the fall. Again, following the safety guidelines we need to have. We had about 184 responses, which is about a 20% return rate from our families. And this survey was available both in English and in Spanish. The second part of the question was how if schools are going to the fall with distance learning for all students, considering the improvements that we received from the surveys and from staff and from parents that they wanted to see more connection, more time on instruction, more rigorous instruction, more accountability with attendance, participation and grading. We have 91% of the families that responded to the survey said that they would consider going back or feel comfortable with going back with distance learning opportunities. And then the last third scenario part is if schools are going to the fall with blended learning, which will attend if you send your children to school. We had about 82% said that we'd send them back with distance learning, again with the safety guidelines in place. Our most recent survey that we sent out on July 10th directly asked parents if we were going to do in-person learning or distance learning. What would your students be doing? And so we had 336 responses and this is per child, which is about a 30% return rate. We have about 900 students in our Power School system and that doesn't account for right now, it's already for families who prefer students. We had, sorry, we have about 183 families right now, which is 55% say that they prefer distance learning option. Thank you, Eric. And then in-person, it's about 153 responses, which is about 45%. So within the three weeks, if you recall from the first part of the survey, we went, it was like a 60-40 split. It's now about a 45-55 split. So of those 153 students that would come back, we said to them, would require transportation. So we can start planning for buses and the routes and what that would look like. Of those 153, 100 families said that they would need bus transportation. 53 said that they would be able to provide that transportation on their own. So it's about a 2/3 split for the transportation piece. So based on all of this feedback, looking at the needs of our community, the feedback from our surveys and what ISB strongly encourages, we are asking for to look at two options to return to school. Option number one is the in-person learning, which again, like I said, ISB strongly encourages that in-person instruction for students to the greatest extent possible while maintaining and keeping health and safety as the number one priority. And the guidelines, we're going to go through a little bit of what IDPH recommends. So being sure those guidelines are in place, which is the social distancing, the masks, the temperature checks, the extra sanitation and the 50 individuals or less in a large space. Or the distance learning option. So for families that don't feel comfortable sending their students back to school, students will receive full-time distance learning through their assigned school. Students will not physically attend a school but will participate in school-based learning virtually from home. Instructional delivery will include strategies such as live virtual instruction, interactive videos and independent work. And even though it says similar to 2020, we mean the approach will be similar to the spring of 2020, not the actual course of grades. So we are going to raise the rigor, we are going to raise the relevance of the content. There is going to be accountability where attendance will count. Dr. Draca will go over this later in the presentation. But attendance, participation and grades will count and attendance will be mandatory. And so in the distance learning program will be taught by teachers from your child's school and grade level. So just to share out with you, all of this information is also available in the detailed roadmap. But the school date for all three options, we are really hoping it's going to follow the current traditional school schedule that we have right now. The times are listed with Diamond Lake being 7:40 to 2:25, West Oak Intermediate School from 8:00 to 5:55, West Oak Middle School from 8:25 to 3:25. And that would be for five days a week. So both if you choose to send your students to school for in-person learning as well as remote learning, we're going to have, follow that same schedule. And again, there's going to be transitions because, you know, students getting on and off the bus. Their dates might look different, so there may be some, a little bit of lag time. So there's going to be extra opportunities for students to stay home and do the remote learning. And, you know, staff will be trained and work on that as a district to kind of complete those schedules. So they haven't been quite finalized yet, but we are accommodating all those daily ones that we'll have to do. That things are going to take extra time and resources to get kids on and off the walk. Plus, temperature checks, breakfast in the morning, lunch, transition throughout the day. That'll all be accounted for in the schedule, but we are trying to follow the traditional school schedule as much as possible. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Draca, who's going to share with you an overview of what in-person learning is going to look like in our district as well as what distance learning and the expectations for that.
Thank you. The next several slides, I'll just walk through and discuss the in-person learning and the distance learning academy portions of our, of our proposal. Some of this might be a little redundant, but I want to make sure that we cover it thoroughly. So ISB, Illinois State Board of Education, strongly encourages in-person instruction for students to the greatest extent possible while keeping health and safety as a number one priority. We intend to follow ISB and the Illinois Department of Public Health guidance recommendations. Our in-person learning and DLO, you'll see this statement in both slides. We, we plan to implement our standards-based curriculum. So all students are receiving, receiving the same high-quality instruction in both environments. This will ensure a continuity of learning. Should students move between in-person and distance learning throughout the year based on either individual needs or if schools are closed due to COVID-19 related issues? The next statement is relatively important because as we're in the process of developing our, our building level schedules, we just have to recognize that those schedules will be finalized when we align both the numbers of students who are returning with those teachers that are able to return as well. So some of that information, those variables will dictate how our, how our schedules look. The next bullet point relates to specials and encore classes such as music, art, PE, which will in many situations occur in the classroom so as to reduce student mobility. And for music classes when weather permits, allowing them to be outside to be able to push forward their curriculum. Similar with band and chorus, we want to promote and allow them to be outside as much as possible. At this point, off-campus field trips and on-campus sports and extracurricular activities will be canceled until phase five of the Restore Illinois Plan. I've received some questions just related to how dual language would look in person. We, we plan to leverage both our interventionists and a co-teaching model to be able to provide and support our dual-language program. Another question I was, I was asked relates to moving to a more paperless environment for in-person learning. With paper, books, any sort of utensils or so on and so forth, are we trying to limit any transfer between students to mitigate any, any transmission of the virus? Another question I received was for students and staff that need to quarantine, how will the transition be held if they remove from in-class to distance learning? In that situation, we would take attendance as normal, but the, the student would transition to our distance learning academy, obviously with the, with the appropriate information and guidance just to allow them to move to a more appropriate environment for them. We would arrange that on an individual basis. And then another great question here is, will the number of instructional minutes for core subjects be reduced? I, I think one of the things as Mr. Rogers will share is that with increased safety protocols will come some increased time that may reduce some of our instructional minutes, which is obviously a necessity to mitigate some risk of transmission of the virus. So generally speaking, we want to stay true to form as best possible with our curricular minutes, both with in-person learning and with our distance learning academy. But common sense would tell us that with transportation, the need for cleaning and sanitation, the need for movement breaks and bathroom breaks, that some of those minutes would certainly be reduced. So Mr. Hanson, I think we can move to the next slide. The distance learning academy will be for those families who choose to not return to in-person learning. Students will be enrolled in the distance learning academy until winter break. Families will have the opportunity to make a decision for the rest of the school year prior to winter break. The next bullet point focuses on some of the differences related to our spring distance learning opportunities in comparison to our, in comparison to our spring distance learning academy. In the spring, we, excuse me, in the fall, we intend to make attendance mandatory and will be recorded daily via Power School. Grades will reflect a student's academic performance on the standards-based curriculum. So unlike the fall where grades were to be, students were to be held harmless, meaning that we were not to reduce their grades for their work. In this situation, we want to make sure that students' academic performance is being appropriately communicated through grades. And participation will be required for both independent and direct instruction. Again, the next bullet point is, is what I mentioned from the in-person learning, which is we continue to implement a standards-based curriculum that we do both in-person and through the distance learning academy. We will leverage live streaming so that students can. We will leverage live streaming so that students have the opportunity. As ISB recommends, we will leverage live streaming so that students have the opportunity to see both what's happening in-person in class while they may be at home. And then we will continue to leverage our staff in terms of a co-teaching model to ensure that there's continuity in our programs. And then again, as Dr. Sharma Lewis had mentioned previously, schedules will follow the D-76 school day. We intend to keep those hours. But schedules will be finalized at the building levels once we are able to know exactly which students are attending and which students declare their intent to return, and then which personnel are able to return in person as well. So I think with that, then that moves to Mr. Rogers, who covers the public health requirements.
Mr. Rogers, can you just go over to maybe Dr. Rogers' office?
Okay, sorry about that. Could you, everyone hear me now? Okay. Sorry, I'll start over again. So for public health requirements, ISBE, IDPH, and CDC released public health requirements for Phase 4 reopening of schools. And those include, require an appropriate use of personal protective equipment, including but not limited to face coverings. Provide more, prohibit more than 50 individuals from gathering in one space. Require social distancing, be observed as much as possible in the building. Require that schools conduct symptom screenings and temperature checks, or require that individuals self-certify that they're free of COVID-19-related symptoms or fever before entering the school building. And last, require an individual, require an increase in school-wide cleaning and disinfecting of all facilities. So what operations would look like in person learning? I'll go by each department. So food service, breakfast and lunch should be eaten in the classroom or lunchroom, depending on each school's structure and schedule. And each school will provide more guidance on their individual buildings. Our meals will still be provided, we'll still be providing healthy and made-from-scratch meals from Quest daily. They'll just be served in a sealed container, and that just to reduce the spread of different contaminants. And meals will still be continued, continue to be provided if we do continue and do a full Distance Learning Academy, or if individuals are split doing in-person and distance learning. Those, that meal service will still be continued. For medical, temperature checks will be required for all staff and students upon entering the building. So individuals will enter in in single-file lines, and there'll be either a temperature check kiosk or a touchless thermometer that a staff member will be operating. It'll get students in the building. So for students that are required, requiring District 76 transportation, this only applies to them. Parents are going to be asked that they self-certify their students daily, and that'll be a questionnaire that they're free of COVID-19 symptoms or fever. We do say more details will be provided, but we'll be using, we'll be using School Messenger, which is our notification method that we already currently use. Individuals with a temperature of over 100.4 degrees will be required to be fever-free for 72 hours prior to returning to school. And then visitors and volunteers will not be permitted in the building until we enter Phase 5 of the Illinois Restore Plan. For masks, students and staff are going to be required to wear face coverings at all time in the building, except when we have scheduled mask breaks. Students and staff can bring their own appropriate face coverings. Also, the district will be providing them regardless, and make those available for students, both to start school and if they should forget it. Masks are going to be required to be worn on the bus at all times. There'll be no exceptions. And there would be a mask policy that is going to be adopted in August 2020. The policy is going to be discussed a little bit later on in the board meeting. This is just an example of what a bus might look like if it were to go to full capacity. So that's 50 individuals, including the driver. Based on the survey data that we've received back, we don't believe that there would be any scenarios where a bus would be to this level of capacity, but just provides an example that two to a seat would be the under 50 individuals on a bus. Due to students attending DLA, we're anticipating less students on the routes. And we are going to be encouraging parents to drive students whenever possible to reduce congestion on our routes. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, there is going to be more time that's going to be needed to adhere to these cleaning policies and procedures. So in between each bus route, the entire bus will be sanitized and disinfected before the other route can run, which is just to extend the length of time that our routes are going to be running. We still expect route times to remain the same that they were last year. It's just the time to disembark from the bus, to do the safety checks and cleaning is what's going to take longer to get to each individual school. And the extra masks are going to be available on the bus should a student forget to bring their own for that day. These are an example of what two classrooms might look like, and this is both at West Oak Campus. So West Oak Intermediate School and West Oak Middle School. Each of these classrooms would allow anywhere from 10 to 16 students to be in a classroom at once, and that still maintains a six-foot distance between students. Our classroom student-to-teacher ratios would be going down based on our survey data, but we are able to adhere to those six-foot guidelines. So as shown in the previous slide, desks and tables will be organized to allow for three to six feet between students. To the greatest extent possible, students will remain in small groups in their classrooms to limit student mobility. As needed, teachers may be asked to rotate in and out of classrooms to provide instruction. I will also point out that we're going to be bringing continuous air, fresh outside air into the building. That's something we're going to be programming into our HVAC system to the greatest extent possible, the law for fresh air, either via a window in a classroom or just by the natural airflow that we'll be bringing in. And buildings will be cleaned and sanitized according to IDPH guidelines. To best adhere to these guidelines, the district is going to be bringing in more night, more of the night custodial staff to work during the day, which will allow us to continuously support frequent cleaning efforts, both in high-touch point areas, in traditionally high-traffic areas, like, you know, front offices and the front entryway, and any touch points that exist throughout the buildings. That would be doorknobs, any sort of handles that students may need to touch throughout the day. That'll be cleaned and disinfected routinely throughout the day. For recess, students will receive extra recess and breaks to allow for mask breaks. So the district is going to be renting some outdoor tents that'll allow for some breaks outside. We do have some district courtyards, and then a lot of green space and blacktop space throughout our facilities. And also, if the district is going to be doing lunch and breakfast in the classroom, that'll free up cafeteria spaces and some other areas in the building to give students breaks throughout the day. And in inclement weather, we'll be making spaces available indoors, like I mentioned, such as a gymnasium or cafeteria space. Students are going to have scheduled bathroom breaks throughout the day. We're going to be encouraging frequent handwashing. The district is going to be having hand sanitizer stations throughout the building in all hallways and classrooms. And like I mentioned before, bathrooms are going to be cleaned and sanitized daily to help support that effort of increased handwashing. Last, wherever possible, hallways are going to adhere to one-way traffic. It's easier in some buildings compared to others. We're lucky, we do have wide hallways that are going to allow for two-way traffic in those scenarios. And also, drinking fountains with water bottleful capacities are going to be turned off. So students will either need to provide a water bottle to fill up with these bottle fill stations, or the district will provide, you know, a cup or some other device during the day. So each building, we are lucky to have, you know, around seven or eight per building in each of our Diamond Lake and West Oak campus. And then lockers will be limited in use. The locker room will not be in use at West Oak Middle School. The district has earmarked that area to be one of its isolation areas, should we need that. So each of our two locker rooms provide appropriate space for students. And also, at Diamond Lake, we're going to have a classroom space allocated for any isolation areas.
You would click there, it's going to be the complete roadmap. It's a 10-page document that basically outlines everything that we've talked about as far as logistics operations, curriculum, teaching, medical information, all detailed. And there, get that to church, the planning for a chat source. They came up with some great feedback, questions, ideas. We incorporated them into this document. It's available on our website. It will be tomorrow in both English and in Spanish, as well as part of the presentation. So some of the things that we want you to consider as far as the calendar goes, safe is giving us four institute days that we can use to plan it as we start the school year. We're going to be taking advantage of those initially at August 17th and 18th. Here at AIID, August 19th and 20th, it's Institute Day. Friday, August 21st, will be individual degree appointments with students and families. We'll be moving to date times, as well as our principals will be working with their leadership team, as well as every other team, so how they're going to set this up, depending on what, on how many students to back. A learning option. Monday, August 24th, will be the official for safe schools for students and grades. They agree initially, August 17th, so we're asking to move that back five days. And then normally, typically, in typical school year, pre, okay, it's all those houses, students are two weeks after. So we're asking for them to start Tuesday, September 8th, information will be available with them. As we discussed at the last board meeting, Tuesday, November 3rd, is now a federal holiday due to elections. So there will be both school and the community staff. And we are asking for, to look at these calendar considerations and then approve them, as well as the roadmap in which we're going to present it to you at the August meeting. So our next set, I know this was a question or a comment earlier this evening about can we survey the staff again? The last survey that we sent to staff at the beginning of July. And so we've sent out a very detailed letter for staff outlining for them all of the legal requirements as far as if they have any medical conditions or underlying condition for childcare needs. They need to fill out the documentation and return that, so they have to do that. And from there, they will determine where we place staff they tend to leave, whether they will be remote learning or remote teaching, or whether they'll be in person teaching and looking at people's occupation and their backgrounds, and then place the staff appropriately where they're needed. Tomorrow, which is July 22nd, we will, again, like I said, publicize the presentation as well as the roadmap to school. So I know we got some feedback that it may be difficult to hear, size of our room, I know it's very big and 56. It may not be great, but again, this presentation was recorded earlier. So you'll be able to hear it again, submit something at the other website tomorrow. And I will allow it to be in the messenger, hopefully they're able to finish. Along with the presentation and the detailed roadmap to return to school will be a family letter and a declaration of intent. So we're requiring families to complete that, whether they want to return to school for in-person learning or stay with remote learning. And then also, if they do choose to return to school for in-person learning, will they require transportation, staying working on routes and schedules and remark that. Next Tuesday, July 8th, will be a virtual parent Q and A session. We will also be publishing all of the questions and comments that we've received tonight. And also, if the board has additional questions, we'll be publishing, publicizing all of it on our website, parents' videos, as well as if they have additional questions or comments. We'll have a sixth meeting in Spanish and a seventh meeting in English. Again, that information will go out tomorrow, the Zoom link. And then ongoing, principals are going to develop and communicate specific school schedules, staff and plans, processes, procedures for a safe and healthy way to school. Also ongoing is the district planning, for sonic dynamic changing, including ISB or IDPH on the return to school guidelines and fever. And as the building plans, district plans, continue to grow and evolve, we get information from the state that we are communicating with you and the trans. So this is an opportunity now for the board to ask us any questions that we have in the press. And if we can't answer them right now, like I showed earlier, write them down. I've done that, by accurate and accurate information actually.
So one of the things that Mr. Rogers said in his portion was that temperature checks will be performed by students and adults entering the building. I was just wondering about just who's going to perform those temperature checks and how it's going to be done, to make sufficient knowledge to the process.
Mr. Rogers, when can you respond to that?
Okay, sorry, could you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. I was having some microphone issues. Yeah, so to answer Mr. Candela's question, I believe it was about how to successfully enter the students into the building while utilizing a temperature check station. So each building is going to have their own entry procedures. But, you know, to use West Oak Intermediate School as an example, there's three different entry and exterior doors that can be utilized, one per grade level. So when students exit the bus, or when the parents drop them off, there's going to be single-file lines that a student will line up in and enter the building while maintaining a six-foot distance. At certain entrances, we're going to have an electronic temperature kiosk. So I'll have a temperature reading device on it. Students will walk in, you can take a temperature from up to three to six feet away, and then they'll get a result of the temperature reading. At other locations, we're going to have either a teacher or a staff member that'll be with a handheld touchless thermometer, and they'll be able to read students instantly. So it's got a less than one-second read time. If a student tests with a fever over or under 100.4, they'd be admitted in the building and would go directly to their classroom. If they're above 100.4, we'd utilize our procedures of sending the student to the nurse where they'd receive a second temperature check. And at that point, if it was still above 100.4, they would go to an isolation area where a parent would be called to pick them up. So I hope I answered your question. If not, I'll be happy to elaborate a little more.
If we identify people who are above that threshold of 100.4, that's, you know, that's not, that's not a positive test for COVID-19. that's, you know, that's not, that's not a positive test for COVID-19, but it's the potential there because they have the fever of that, of that temperature. What about notification? Do we have the, you know, the right or responsibility to notify, you know, like the, the classroom that that person is, is assigned to, whether it's a teacher or it's a student? You know, I think in the past, we've gotten letters that someone in your child's class had LICE or, you know, is there, how are we going to protect and advise parents, students, and staff if we, if we have potential for illness in our children?
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Candela. We're still developing the exact notification procedures. But like you mentioned, if a student is within six feet of another student for more than 15 minutes, that's what the state guidelines consider close contact. So i- if the student did have a fever, that we discovered they were over 100.4 in that example, and they were within six feet for more than 15 minutes, that's absolutely something that, that the student, the other student would need to, you know, have appropriate procedures to check their temperature as well and determine whether isolation is needed. We are going to be, again, distributing some communication guidelines and procedures when a student does test positive for either COVID or had a, you know, an elevated fever. But if a student, you know, for instance, gets a temperature checked before they get into the building, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be in contact with the rest of their class unless, you know, it may be involved in close proximity on the bus. So regardless, I think we're going to have some procedures in place for notification, very similar like you mentioned with LICE or other, you know, other items that a school may have to deal with.
On the, on the subject of staff placement, the presentation indicates that on July 15th was the deadline, I think, the initial deadline for the staff to term replacement at need.
No, that's when the initial communication was sent.
Okay, what is the deadline for the staff?
July 1st.
July 1st, okay. So that takes into consideration the initial question that we heard about, we still have a chance to change their option.
Or provide documentation, you know, if there's a reason why they can't come back, they need to provide the documentation and the reason for why.
Okay, thanks.
I think it was yesterday, we have it in our pack, in the Daily here, it showed that Stevenson came out and announced that they were going to distance learning for the fall semester. And I imagine it had to do with their, their concern about maintaining the safety of all students and, and staff, even maybe they didn't feel that they could guarantee it. And doing it early enough that they could prepare versus trying to prepare, versus trying to prepare for all scenarios at once. So my concern is, well, twofold. One is, are we spreading ourselves too thin by trying to prepare for all scenarios? And, and Dr. Braun even asked me about a third scenario. Or should we attempt to make a decision earlier? And I guess where I'm going is a concern I have about in-person learning. Well, that's absolutely where we want to get to, absolutely. Has to do with what happens, to build off of Mr. Candela, what happens when a kid tests positive, when we think a kid is positive, or a teacher? Because, because of the issues with regard to testing, that person could have been in that class for a week or two before they get back the test. And if there was quick available testing all around us, then that's a different issue because we could pick up on it and we can identify students or staff and pull them out and quickly isolate anybody who's been in contact and take care of it. But it doesn't appear that we have all of that available to us in the community to be able to do that. And it feels like we're, we're sort of rolling the dice. And I don't think it's a matter of if, it's a matter of when something happens in the classroom. And it just feels like we would likely get in a position where we would have to shut down at some point. Again, just personal view. So that's my personal concern about, number one, waiting. And number two, continuing to plan on in-person right now.
I just think back off of Mr. Halman's comment. I'd like to know how, just take us through the thought process of why the five days a week model was chosen versus other options. So the ISD guide one was, it presented three different learning models. And you chose two of them. Can you take us through how that all came?
Well, we initially did the survey for parents about returning to school or not. It came back about 60/40. So we looked at those numbers, and the average class size, we said, is about 20 kids. So if 60% of them came back, it's about 12 kids. We have the room to accommodate for 12 kids in a classroom. And that's something very extreme. You know, so if we have about 90 to 100 kids per grade level, and 60% came back, we looked at those numbers and we said, we, we have the resources to provide them there. Plus, some of the feedback that came back to us is that parents had to return to work. Our students are younger, different than the high school, so they're not able to stay at home alone. And they're dependent on us as far as custodial relationships, as well as for breakfast, lunch, and the resources that we provide them here and the connections with other adults and students. So we looked at those social emotional benefits too, and talked, you know, as a district leadership team and, and talked specifically to the operations department and maintenance department, and can they maintain all the safety guidelines at, at Polos? And we felt that we were able to do that with confidence. Now, I know in the media, a lot more information has come out, rates have gotten higher, things have spiked. But I think even with ISD's guidelines, it was that return to in-person learning was the one that they were hiring and urging. Now, I know it was urging specifically at risk, at youth, but we have about 40% of our students who are English language learners, as well as about 10% of our students who have IEPs and 504s. So that's a large population, you know, that we need to serve. And they say, try to have them come back as much as possible. So we're looking at, I think, our community needs, what feedback from our families. We felt like this was the best action possible. Plus, a lot of the feedback from TLOs were inconsistency and how, you know, the AD schedule may not have been ideal for some families because the quality of the work, the rigor, the relevance as far as instruction wasn't there. So we said, if we can keep the experiences as traditional as possible, as, oh, typical as possible, as what students are used to, they may be more engaged, they may get more attendance, participation, and accountability from them. That's a little bit about our thought process.
And if I understand correctly, the rationale for a district to adopt the hybrid model, where you have essentially half of the students on one day and half on the other day, the reasoning for that would be the number of students and the space available would not allow for such a distancing. You're saying, if in our case, because of the anticipated number of students that would be in the building, we could socially distance with all of those kids in the building with every day?
Correct. And now three weeks later, that number has even gone down. So instead of going from 60/40, we're now at 55/45. So the numbers of students that may possibly return are less, probably about 10 or 11 students.
Is there, was there any discussion about offering more options for students switching from distance learning academy to in-person, other than just at the end of the semester?
I think it would be too hard to switch from business learning to in-person. And the reason we wanted to say, if you are choosing in-person, please let us know. You don't respond to the survey, which you'll see out tomorrow. You don't respond to the declaration of intent. It takes us more time adding in resources for in-person learning. So we need to know if you're coming back, where, if a student, and we don't want to cross the template, so if the kids are at home, and then they come in, they're going to be working with a group of students and teachers, where a lot of times that the, the group has been together, let's just say there's a class at times they've been together, they've been exposed to each other, and then somebody new comes in. Just didn't want that part of it to, you know, come into contact with them. The part for, we don't need resources except for a Chromebook at home and access to that. So that's why we said, if you're at home, stay at home for the whole semester, not going back and forth. However, if your distance learning can become, excuse me, if your in-person learning can become sick, you could go to remote learning. It's not going to require any additional resources from us, sides of use of the technology.
Right, I think my concern with that is like, you know, it was already kind of difficult for some parents navigating spring. And of course, like, you know, changes have been made, and a lot of funding has gone into the distance learning. But, you know, these students are going to also have new teachers that don't know them as well, and kind of don't know their quirks. And if it's not working out for those students at home, you know, just seems pretty inflexible, which I think that's kind of something that we need to keep in mind, is just trying to make some flexibility.
I understand that, and you know, we've consulted with all of pretty much Lake County School District, and that's what they're doing too, for that exact reason of just agent resources, exposing more kids and not being prepared to have them come back. We're adding another kid on, another, you know, student on to the bus route, into the lunch, you know, into the lunchroom, the lunch procedures. Just all of that just adds in additional. I understand what you're saying, inflexible, but if parents are choosing to keep their students at home, then I think that they need to keep them at home if they're coming to school. And we need to be prepared for that. But doing that in and out of the semester is going to be difficult for us to maintain, I think, the safety for all students that way.
That falls in line too with what ISD's guidelines are in terms of keeping a cohort or a pod of kids together and trying to maintain those, those contacts so that they're minimized. I have some questions if no one else does. Mr. Rogers, can I give you a clarify something for me? In your presentation, it mentioned that students that are not using, students that are using the bus are going to have to self-certify. But doesn't ISD require all students and staff and people entering the building to self-certify and temperature screen? Or to, I'm sorry, to do a symptom screening, which would be the self-certification and a temperature screen? So is everyone going to have to do that?
If you, I forgot exactly what slide it is, but it talks about the public health requirements. The current requirements are that we require all schools to conduct symptom screening and temperature checks or require that individuals self-certify that they're free of symptoms before entering the school building. And the same guidelines apply to transportation. They either need to get temperature checked, or they need to self-certify. Self-certification is our, is our only option at this point, based on, there's some liability concerns with our outsourced transportation provider, that we don't have the option of doing temperature checks prior to riding the bus. So that's why we, we chose a self-certification option that adheres to our, our current notification platforms. We feel like it would be easy, there's an app, and parents are already used to using that, that service. So it's an either/or that we're required to do. But we are also going to be temperature checking regardless of whether a student, their self-certification selection prior to entering the building.
You're on the same page there. My question is, ISD requires you to go through a symptom check in addition to the temperature check? And so for the students that are not taking the bus, or the staff, or whoever is entering the building, you have to go through a symptom screener, so it's more than just the temperature. So how is that going to handle?
I'm sorry, my, my phone cut out for the last second. Would you mind just repeating that?
Yeah, sure. So ISD requires both the temp, it essentially requires a symptom screener, which would include the temperature check, but would go beyond additional symptoms. So my question is, if the kids that are taking, the parents are driving them to school, or staff, or whoever else is coming to the building, how are you going to have them do a symptom screener beyond just a temperature check?
Well, if, if the student's being dropped off to school, they're going to be doing the temperature check, which I believe is the most robust version of screening. If I'm answering your question correctly, that, the temperature check, you know, apparent, our, our guidelines do state, and it'll be listed in the roadmap, if a student does have any symptoms, and we list, you know, a dozen symptoms that are related to COVID-19, anything from, you know, cough to, there's some aches and pains to, you know, other sort of issues, the student will be encouraged to stay home at that point. And there would be no doctor's note or anything like that that's going to be required for that student. But the temperature check i- is what we believe is the best, based on the guidance that we have, the best system of prior to student entering. Again, I really apologize if I didn't answer that entire question. So if, if I missed some of that, I'd encourage anybody else to jump in. But those are the procedures.
I can just add, on page three, going on page four of the roadmap, I think this outlines Mrs. Hale's question. Again, it's taking the parents' word for self-certification, because it says right there on the bottom of page three, parent certification for sending children to school. Parents are going to be required to take a temperature reading and check for COVID-19 symptoms. Each morning, your child will be present in our building. Parents will need to report symptoms daily via school messenger. And so we'll figure out, you know, how that works and communicate and educate parents on that. But it basically says, you are, by sending your child to school, you are certifying the following. If they do not have a fever of 100.4 degrees or, you know, ATJ, if COVID-19 exists, symptoms that are listed in number two.
Is the first point just sort of to allow them to get on the bus inside?
Yes.
I guess I'm just asking, in looking at what ISD is saying, it's, it seems like it's more than just a temperature check. Because if you have someone without a fever, but who's coughing or showing other symptoms, I'm just asking how we're going to catch that. And it looks like, and I, and I don't have a bird in front of me, but it looks like in the presentation, we were just asking for the bus riders to certify that. So I just wanted to make sure that we were going beyond.
I apologize, Ms. Hale, that, you, you are correct. The self-certification is, is really a web-based application that we're just requiring for transportation riders to fill out. There's also a self-certification that a parent's required to do prior to entering, prior to going to school each day. And that's something that doesn't have to be reported via an app. It's something that a parent needs to do each day, is outlined in the roadmap there. But we can't verify what the student's temperature is based on what the parent's response is. We're asking them to verify the COVID-related symptoms. And then we, I think it's our job to, to take the temperature each day. So the parent's doing both, but they're not physically reporting with an app each day unless they're riding the bus.
Thank you, that helps. And so along with those lines, or along those lines, how is the custodial staff going to be screened? Are they going to be screened when they come to the building as well?
Yes, the custodial staff will follow the same temperatures, checks and temperature screenings that our, our normal staff will follow. So Citywide's detailed their plan to me and how they plan on certifying. They, they come in early each day, they're in the, they're in much before other students and staff are, right around the time our maintenance staff is in. So they're going to report it. So they're going to report it, they have to report a log each day with their temperature is to Citywide, and, you know, prior to even entering our building. So it's very much like they report their time and attendance, they have to report their temperature each day.
Thank you for that clarification.
I just have one more question for Dr. Giraka. You touched on the possibility of instructional minutes or time changing due to needing additional time for, you know, whatever reason, transitioning into the building, transitioning out of the building. When do you think you'll have a better idea of exactly what the instructional framework or instructional minutes are going to look like for each grade level?
Yeah, I think generally speaking, as I had mentioned, we're going to try to keep as true-to-form as possible. I think once we have a clear indication as to which students are going to be here and which teachers are going to be here, we're going to be able to, I think, more accurately align our teachers to our instructional program and our students. I'm anticipating over the next two weeks, once we provide this presentation, get feedback from the Board of Education and the community, and then work with the building-level principals that will be able to create a more clear framework for each instructional model at each building. And I should also add that it would, it will vary by building. The way a primary building will look with the necessity to have smaller groups to get more direct instruction may look different than your West Oak Middle School model, and that some of those kids have some independent qualities that will help facilitate, you know, the online learning and in-person learning process. So, you know, to answer that quickly, I'd say probably within the next two, two and a half weeks, we should have a more clear indication as to what that model will look like.
Mr. Gibson, I have a couple of questions for you. With having, you know, potential live streaming of classes, is the network going to be able to support that, especially in like this building where you have all those different grade levels, and you have, you know, so many people using devices at the same time?
That's a great question. We're actually going to plan on doing, potential of having live streaming happen within our campuses. Summer School is going to conduct a few days of in-school live streaming to do a smaller stress test of the network for live streaming. That doesn't incorporate additional students that would physically be here, utilizing their Chromebooks, but that'll give us an understanding of how that would look. And then also to be able to document, I do have confidence our network should be able to handle live streaming in desks, but we definitely love the stress test, that they get a good information about that. And I hope that also to review it from a instructional standpoint of how our teachers could handle live-streamed lessons from, within the school building.
Sure. And then the other question I had is, during the, during the spring, when we transitioned into distance learning, we heard a lot from parents and students who had difficulties with Chromebooks just with the speed. Is there anything we can do to improve that at all?
A few things that we wanted to make sure they were, by considering, well, first off, this is, last year, our release of our current Chromebook, so they'll be turned over. They're short-lived, I mean, they've been with us for a short amount of time, just to make sure that we turn them over, so we're always keeping our devices up to date. That being said, I did discuss with my technology team how often they can receive student help tickets from whether parents or students. And we had consistent students have asked, have inquiries or questions regarding their device. The information that was shared with me is that we didn't have consistent students base up on a particular device. However, for distance learning, we highly recommend we'll continue utilizing the student help desk, either for our parents who have younger children, or older students to communicate that way so that we can solve remotely, or set up appointments to do device slots if needed. Last thing I do is, as students struggle, I want to make sure that they're, that they're supported.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any additional questions?
Can you, can you remind us of the deadline for parents? For them to decide, determine which sort of options we're going to have, as well as transportation?
Sure. Tomorrow, the declaration in text is going to be released to parents. They're going to go out via email and text and a voicemail reminder at 6:00 p.m. And they'll have until Sunday, August 2nd at 6:00 p.m. And if they don't complete that, then they'll assume that their child isn't coming back. And we will be doing follow-ups, you know, that our office staff, our principals, our teachers, we're going to ask them to reach out to families that we haven't heard from. So we'll continue to do follow-ups, but they will have about 10 days to complete it.
Did I understand correctly that like for the Distance Learning Academy, they are planning on trying to cover the same hours? So it'd be like seven hours of instructional instruction?
So ISB is requiring five hours of an instructional day, and that's what we have right now. So we're going to follow the same topic, where we do like an opening activity, there'll be, you know, some social-emotional learning lessons in there, and we're doing some at-home projects, some physical activities, music classes, specialist classes. So we'll have other things, but we're going to try to follow the structure similar to the in-person day.
Can you give us more information on how Distance Learning Academy is going to work? Especially at the middle school level, when you think about the fact that we have one math teacher, one Spanish teacher, et cetera. How will the teaching and the instruction take place when presumably one teacher is undergoing and learning teaching virtually?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Mrs. Kwan. Certainly, the staff will have to align with, with both in-person and Distance Learning Academy. So what you could potentially see is a, if you don't have an available resource in person, that students may have live streaming of that class, potentially from a teacher who may not be within the building. There's that possibility as well. There would obviously be supervision, but depending on the number of staff who can return will allow us to be able to, will really predicate our model that's available. So we will look at the staff resources that Mr. Cunningham has in terms of language services and be able to look at how many of them are able to return, and then potentially allocate them differently than in the past in order to meet the needs of both in-person and distance learning. So if you might see people that have a variant schedule, meaning that they may be teaching some classes online, and they might be teaching some classes in person. You might see that some of these teachers who are not able to return to the building based on either health or family issues, might be providing distance learning to a certain subgroup of students that are, that are at home. So there's, there's really going to be some, some matrix-like decisions that are made once we have a clear determination as to, as to what we can offer based on the number of students. Like Mr. Hauptman had mentioned earlier, because it's a duplicitous model, it's going to require us to think a little bit differently about how we can implement that. And there will certainly be no shortage of challenges in doing so. So I'd love to be able to provide you with a nice, clean-cut answer, but at this point, without operating on absolute clear and concise information, I can't completely provide that for you. But with that, we do have some, you know, general ideas and frameworks in mind for how we might be able to implement that.
So if that's possible with some of the kind of epidemic content areas, what about subjects like band, or choir, or art, where we only have one or two dedicated teachers that are able to teach those areas?
Yeah, that is a really a crazy challenge, because, because what you have is this scenario where you can't necessarily provide the type of in-person learning instruction as you would in the past, based on the ISB guidelines and the nature of contamination in both like choir and band, and so on and so forth. So in large part, you're going to have to think, and choir, I should add, you're going to have to think about when there's availability for outside spaces. And then we have to think about the ability to allow for small groups for instruction as well. So again, once we know which students are going to be participating in person, we'll be able to allocate our resources accordingly. But I don't think that there's a, again, when you, when you create a duplicitous scenario like this, it stretches your, it stretches your resources because of the nature, and even, I mean, even more so with music, because of the nature of the program that we can implement based on ISB guidelines. So I think once we find out the number of students who come back, I think Mr. Cunningham, myself, and the DLT will work together to try and align the resources that we have back in person with the resources with the students that are, that are available, or who are going to be taking in-person and DLAs.
Will we be, before and after school care? You know, I have, Mr. Rogers, I can't remember the discussion that we had, so forgive me too. The question is, are we going to be ready before and after school, or child? Or though you've had the conversations with Innovation Station?
Yeah, they're still working on their plans right now. They're, they haven't given me a definitive answer. They're still planning to come back to some capacity. But again, they're, they're still getting their staffing rosters and are going to await our numbers and possible needs, but it is going to be an option.
And they'll have to follow the same guidelines that we have too.
Will we add additional staff members to like eight bus monitors? Or making sure that the students are wearing their masks when they're on the bus?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think we're going to wait until the data comes back about actually how many students are coming back to in-person learning, and then align our staff accordingly, just like we're going to do with our teaching staff. What other additional resources do we need? Do we need monitors to check, you know, temperatures as they come into the door? Do we need monitors for the bus, whatever that looks like? Or we use our learning associates, or are they best utilized depending on class size? So right now, the answer is, we will definitely respond, you know, to the situations like that, but I don't know, we'll have to hire somebody additional, depending on how many students come back. Any other questions? All right, I know that Mrs. Kerr and Mrs. Bishop are keeping track of all the questions that are in the chat right now, or any comments, both in English and in Spanish, and they will be made available on our website tomorrow. And like I said, the leadership teams can review them and make sure that we thoughtfully and accurately respond to that, and then that'll also be posted on our website. And that's all we have?
Okay. Thank you. Just to conclude, I just wanted to thank everyone for the thoughtful questions or comments. And I wanted to thank the task force and all of our teachers and our staff, and the parents, and the administrators, and everyone who participated. We really appreciate your time for input, your feedback. We know that these are not easy decisions, or decisions that anyone takes lightly. So I just wanted to thank all of you for that. And now we move on to our business agenda this evening. We have two items for action on the business agenda. The first item is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If anyone, board member, staff administrator, or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved at the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education, accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda, items A through E as listed. May I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Ozada?
Yes.
Ozada?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Sullivan? Moving on to personnel, which is our other item for action this evening. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education, accepts and approves personnel items depicted on the agenda. We have three new hires and one resignation. May I have a motion to approve, please?
So move.
Ozada?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Ozada?
Yes.
Congratulations. We look forward to working with you. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is the first reading of a number of press policies. And we have kind of a summary from below and in the board packet. Also in the board packet, I believe, is a mask policy for you to review as well. Does anyone have any questions on this? Obviously, we're not voting on this this evening, and we won't be taking action at an August board meeting. No? Okay, that includes the business agenda, and we will now move on to board discussion. Do you have any items for board discussion? Did anyone else have any items for board discussion? No? Okay, and moving on to freedom of information across, we have one from SmartBook here that I believe is filled. And then moving on to notices and communications.
So all of those items are just here for your information. We have our appointment board meeting calendar for your reference. We have the summary and the agenda from last week's planning for a task force meeting. And then two articles recognizing Chief Dunham's new appointment as the village manager, or excuse me, village administrator. And then also the article that was shared in the Daily Herald about Stevenson's return to school plan going remote. So more just for your information.
We now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items this evening?
Anything presentation-related, non-agenda items?
Correct.
Yeah. None?
None, okay.
Sorry.
Okay. There being no public comments on non-agenda items, we'll move on to others. Do we have any others this evening? Okay, then we will move to adjournment to executive session. For the appointment, employment, and compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee in the district, or legal counsel for the district, including during testimony, and a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. May I have a motion to adjourn it to executive session?
Okay.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Ozada?
Yes.
Armenta?
Yes.
Hale?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Ozada?
Yes.
Kwan?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everyone. We'll now be going into executive session.